I now call the October 8, 2019 Work Session Meeting for the City of Riverton, City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Schotz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Councilman Mike Bailey will give us the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we have. Thank you for letting us live in this wonderful city and this wonderful state of Wyoming. Please bless us in all that we do here tonight, that we may look after the best interests of all those involved. And please pour up special blessings and protections to the members of law enforcement, emergency services, and all of those that every day are out there protecting us and helping us live safe and happy lives. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Your Honor, Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schotz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember orders. Some moved?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Rota and a second by Councilwoman Schotz. All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare a quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Some moved?
Second.
Corey, was that you?
Kyle.
Kyle? Thanks, Kyle. Councilman Larson has the motion and Councilwoman Schotz has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any...all opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Utility rates, presentation, and discussion. Financial Director's report, please.
Thank you, your honor. One of the critical roles of elected officials in municipal government is to provide, maintain, improve, and regulate the use of water treatment and distribution systems, sewage and waste disposal systems, and in the case of the City of Riverton, sanitation, collection, and disposal. It is a requirement that municipalities operate these systems in a way that money's received and expended are on a fund basis whereby they must each be separated from other operations. These funds, commonly referred to as enterprise funds, are set up to operate as a business. A common misconception in communities is that rates charged for utilities help support all aspects of city government. This is not the case. Rates charged for utilities are to pay the cost to provide such service to its citizens. Enterprise fund rates should generate adequate revenue to pay costs of operation and maintenance, as well as establishing replacement funds for future capital needs. In 2018, the city engaged Getting Great Rates LLC, a third-party experienced utility consulting firm, to analyze the city's current utility rate structure and associated costs. The analysis assists in determining what levels utilities will need to be funded to accomplish needed system development, refurbishment, repair, maintenance, operation, and ongoing sustainability. The consultant examined a substantial amount of data, including but not limited to financial data, including historical itemized budgets, income and expense statements, balance sheets, and operational costs, to name a few. They also examined borrowing and debt history, including historical and future ongoing obligations, equipment repair and replacement schedules, capital improvement needs, including timing and costs, volume usage data per fund sorted by rate classes and codes, rates and fee tables, and rate resolutions, as well as system-wide meter inventories, including their costs and efficiency ratios. The information you receive this evening is the final analysis report regarding the results of the study. The recommendations are provided by the consulting firm based upon actual data extracted from city records. We are pleased to have the consultant Carl Brown with us this evening. We encourage you to ask questions and see authority regarding this information, as we have the privilege of the expert before you. As a final reminder, this discussion is for informational purposes only, and council will be requested to take action at a future meeting. And with that, I'd like to introduce Carl Brown, Getting Great Rates LLC.
Thank you. Carl, nice to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mia. And Mia listed off a pretty long list of data and information that I used to analyze. Mia collected most of it. Now, there were a few other people. Tony gave me some guidance. So there's some folks here at the city who provided all of that information and data for me, except for just a few little pieces, like some census data that I went out online to find myself and things like that. But the lion's share came from your own staff, and I have to tell you, they did a great job of getting it.
Bring that mic over closer to you.
Okay, excuse me there.
Camera...the camera's on you. They want to get everything it's...everything you have to say.
And I may have a little bit of a hard time holding still, because I'm a mover. But the data that I used almost all came from your staff, and they did a really great job of gathering the data for me. I really appreciate that work that they did. Mia also gave you a pretty good summary of what rate analysis tries to achieve and how I go about doing that. I summarize it this way. I first attempt to calculate the cost to serve different kinds of customers with each one of the utility services. Cost to serve in the rate analysis business has a particular meaning, and that is basically if a customer causes the utility to incur a cost, by all rights, the customer should reimburse the utility for that cost. Now, the math can get pretty complicated, but the essence of it is just plain logic. If it costs money to provide the service, that customer should reimburse you the cost of getting that service. So the analysis that I did, used a lot of math, applied to your data, your financials, repair and replacement schedules, capital improvement plans, all sorts of things. It all got crunched in a great big spreadsheet. Actually, it's about ten big spreadsheets in your case, but it got crunched to determine, in essence, what minimum charge you should charge to recover fixed costs, what unit charges you should charge to recover variable costs, and what system development fees and/or, and it's an "and" situation for you all, what system development fees and what surcharges to the minimum you should assess to recover capacity to serve costs. I evaluated each one of those kinds of costs on a cost-to-serve basis. So I'll show you a classification here in just a little bit, but I looked at each one of your costs and made an assessment. Is it a fixed cost? Is it a variable cost? Is it partly fixed, partly variable? Is it capacity-related? Basically, I determined what the nature of the cost was. And then that cost, if it is a fixed cost, goes into one pot. If it's a variable cost, it goes into another. If it's capacity, it goes into a third. We sum all those things up and do some division and arrive at an average fixed cost, an average unit cost, and a cost per...it depends on the unit of measure we use, but a cost for capacity, either based on water meter size or just simply the fact that there are units of use or units of customers or sub-customers on the system. I'll explain that last piece a little bit more a little bit later. The report is long. The narrative part of the report is forty-six pages long. What I just described to you now is a Cliff's Notes version of what that report says. But as you look at the report, hopefully again, in the next several days or maybe a couple of weeks before you meet again, hopefully what you'll do is, as you're reading through the report, I necessarily have to get into the weeds a little bit. Don't get bogged down in the weeds. Always keep in mind that what I'm calculating and what I'm always aiming at is cost-to-serve rates. Fixed costs recovered with minimum, unit costs or variable costs recovered in a unit charge, capacity costs recovered in either a surcharge to the minimum based on water meter size or based on extra units that you have. Extra units being apartment units in a complex, mobile homes in a mobile home park, something like that. So don't get too bogged down in the weeds trying to figure out exactly what each one of those subsections means. It's always about getting at cost-to-serve rates. I'm going to change gears just a little bit and take you to a particular table in the water model. So in your report, I want you to find Table 8, which...
Page eighty-one? It's Table seventeen.
I believe it's page one forty-five.
Have you found the page yet?
Table eight?
Oh, not Table A, Table eight.
Eight, correct. Yes, sir.
So Table eight, which is on page sixty-eight. So if you'll have a look at page sixty-eight. And I've got that table, and it's pretty hard to see at that scale. But I will go to the spreadsheet where that table came from.
Mayor and Council, that's seventy...it's page seventy-two if you're doing the search function.
Oh, okay.
Because we have some extras.
Yeah, because of cover letter and things.
Yep.
All right, Table eight. Now, I'm going to give you cost classification 101. Cost classification is the process that you use to figure out what the minimum charge should be, what the unit charge, the average unit charge should be, and if you really take it another step further, what capacity costs on some basis, some unit of measure, should be. In this classification, I'm only looking at minimum charge and unit charges, fixed costs and variable costs. I do the capacity cost classification in a separate set of tabs. So Table eight, average cost classification, 109 salaries and wages, $716,000 and change. See the column? It's column C, right in the center of the table. Fixed cost percentage, I called that thirty-three and a third, or just in easy language, one-third fixed, and two-thirds variable. Meaning, I classified your salaries and wages, which include operations staff, but also includes administration staff. I classified that group of salaries as one-third fixed, which simply means that part of the cost should be recovered in the minimum charge. It's a fixed cost. And two-thirds variable, the rest of the cost should be recovered in unit charges. I don't have a mathematical basis for calculating that it should come out to thirty-three and a third. I only have experience in working with other utilities of lots of sizes, ages, and things like that, and I have found that almost always utilities with five...that serve 5,000 or more in population, and if they have a few decades of age on them, those kinds of utilities normally have a fixed cost percentage in their overall salary structure of between a quarter and about a third of those expenses being fixed, being related to general administration billing, things like that. So I used one-third. One-third is a little conservative, meaning it causes a little bit more of that expense to be recovered in minimum charges, which means less in unit charges, which means if you sell a lot of water one year, your incomes are not going to go up a lot. But if you don't sell a lot of water, or the average amount of water, in a year, your revenues also won't drop through the floor. Here in the arid west, I find, and I pretty well agree, that it makes pretty good sense to have a minimum charge that if you're going to err, err on the side of having it be a little too high rather than a little too low, to guard against the years when it actually rains a little bit more, you get a little bit more snow, and people don't irrigate quite so much. So one-third fixed, two-thirds variable. You can see those last two columns, gray and blue, average fixed cost. Now, that is the sum total of thirty-three percent times 716,000. And the variable cost, 477, is two-thirds of that 716,000. And if you run on down the table, you can see that I've got several that are one-third, two-third split. And then at office supplies, it goes to a full 100% fixed. Office supplies are basically used for general system administration, billing, things like that. Basically, everybody benefits about the same from that kind of work that happens or that kind of expense. And usually related to that, office equipment, computer supplies, lab supplies. Now, laboratory analyses, water analyses, basically, you have to have supplies to be able to do those water samples. Water samples, most of the time, most of us believe that they pretty well benefit all of us pretty equally, because if you all serve bad water, people might die or get sick, and we're all subject to having that happen to us, whether we use a lot of water or little water. You only need to drink a little bit of bad water to have it make you sick. So that kind of an expense is almost always considered a fixed cost, 100% fixed cost. Uniforms, basically the uniforms on your staff wear out, whether they're going out dealing with small meters or small volume customers or big ones. So you can see my logic as you go down that table. Now, let's scoot down a little bit further. Treatment chemicals, 113,000. Treatment chemical costs occur because you run water through the system. If you didn't run any water through the system at all for a whole year, you wouldn't need to buy any treatment chemicals. If you had to sell twice as much water in a year as normal, the number would need to be double. So treatment chemicals, to keep it real simple, are 0% fixed, 100% variable. Now, in reality, your chemical supplier might require you to pay a certain amount upfront, you know, regardless of the volume that you buy. And then if you buy a lot, maybe because the trucking is cheaper or something, they cut you a little break. But you're using chemicals because you're treating water. So it's based on the reason why you get chemicals, it's a variable expense. The other big expense like that is electric. Now granted, and you use electric basically to pump water around. You've got a little bit for lighting and stuff like that. But almost all of it is used for pumping water around the system through the treatment plant, out of the ground, from your lake or wherever you go. Granted, the power company has...also has a minimum charge because they have some fixed expenses they need to recover. So they bill you a minimum, and then they bill you a certain amount on unit, and then they also bill you for capacity, too. So the bill that they send you, if you wanted to really slice and dice, could be sliced into a few other pieces, but the minimum is going to be relatively small. And back to the reason why you have electric, it's because you're pumping water around and treating it and serving people. So I classify electric as zero fixed, 100% variable. Now, you notice that I'm describing a basic notion of why a cost gets called fixed or variable. But if I'm going to err on how I call a cost, I err on the side of trying to keep it simple. It's complex enough as it is. So I make simple calls. I don't split individual costs like electric into the minimum and capacity, man charge, and power. I don't do that kind of splitting. I call it 100% variable, zero fixed, because of the reason why you use electric. When we sum up Columns E and F, we get a million, 700,000 and a little bit of change for the fixed costs bucket, I'll call it. The variable cost bucket is 2.4 million. Then we can do math on the fixed cost, divide the total fixed cost by the number of customers that you have, and then divide by the number of bills that you send out per year, twelve, because you're billing monthly, and that becomes the average...the average fixed cost per user, per, in your case, month, $32.34 per month, per customer, on average, fixed cost. And then right below that is the average variable cost, which you arrive at by dividing the 2.4 million dollars by the billable units of, if you look across, you'll see that you sold 469 million gallons and a little change. You bill by the thousand gallon unit, so that means you divide the 2.4 million by 469,496 billable units. That gives you an average of $5.14 per thousand gallons. That determines the cost-to-serve rate structure for minimum and unit charges. Now, I've got lots of figures elsewhere in other tables, but they all come together around that rate structure. Now, I'll point out a couple of other things, oops, about this table. If you look at that row five, the average rate structure basis year runs from 7/1/22 to 6/30/23. So I'm using the fiscal year that's in the future of '22, '23. I'm not using last year. You want to set rates for the future. You don't want to set rates for the past. The past is gone. The past, almost always, costs less than what the future will cost. So you want to look into the future to figure out where to set rates. You also want to look into the future so that, hopefully, you can use a budget year that looks like it's going to be a pretty normal kind of an expense year, pretty common for what's going to happen in the future. So I went out to '22, '23, rather than the past, to arrive at the structure, and then I'll discount these minimum and unit charges, fixed and variable costs, back to the present, so you know where you need to start right away. So in the next month or two or maybe three, where you need to set rates initially, so that they're in this sort of a structure, making the assumption that all of the increases after that initial, or all of the adjustments after that initial adjustment, will just be across-the-board inflationary increases. I do that on purpose. Well, I'll back up just a little bit. The American Water Works Association kind of has the bible for rate setting, water rate setting. It applies equally to sewer rate setting, and truthfully, the methodology applies to any utility service, doesn't matter what it is. It's just a matter of using the right units of measure. That manual describes calculating rates on a cost-to-serve basis based on what will be...what either was, or what will be experienced in some year. Usually, it's done for the next year. So you're in this year, you're looking ahead to next year to what the budget's going to be, classify those costs, and then you set your rates for next year. So you don't do that projecting into the future, classify, arrive at a structure, discount back to the present and set rates. You just go straight to the next year. Now, I don't like to classify costs that way because I find that the majority of my clients, cities and districts, come to me because their rates may or may not be adequate right now, but they're looking ahead at some big capital improvements, or catching up on repair and replacement, or something that is very different from what is right now. So next year is probably going to be a lot like this year, because they haven't adjusted rates yet. So they've been budgeting for the revenue that they've got, not for the expenses that they've they really need to plan on incurring. So I look into the future at a year that will be more normal, once the rates are adequate, to pay for all the costs that are coming down the pike. And then, after I discount back, it makes it real simple for you all to make rate adjustments in the future. All you need to do, after you've adjusted rates the first time, is you look at next year's budget. I calculated, or I estimated, that on average, your expenses will go up by three percent with a few variations. If your budget looks like it's going to be three percent more next year, rather than the same, then you increase minimum unit charge, system development fees, across the board, by three percent. The next year, you do the same thing. Next year, the same thing. The closer you get to twenty-two, twenty-three, the closer you're getting to the absolute correct numbers for rate structure, because that's the year that I calculated it for. Assuming that I was in the right ballpark for inflation and that sort of thing. And you'll probably be able to do across-the-board increases for two or three more years past that. So I aim at getting you to the fifth year from the initial adjustment year, and having rates that are properly structured for then. But they're going to be structured pretty well for two or three more years, assuming that your costs don't change real dramatically. That table right there is the core of the analysis. That table tells me what structure the rates need to be in. And then it's just a matter of, if your expenses are going to be higher in the future, and discounting back to the present, at the numbers that I had right there are not going to be enough, because in the eighth year, you're going to do a great big capital improvement and have a really whale of a big debt service, I can raise those fixed and variable cost pots by the same percentage. They stay in the same relative ratio with each other, so that I can achieve the proper reserve in ten years, and then that becomes the minimum charge and unit charge that you need. All right, lots of words about cost classification. But that is the core of the analysis. Now, back--
Carl?
Carl, we have a question.
Yeah.
Councilman Bailey.
On your chart here, in the lower right-hand corner, you've got unbilled water estimated at thirty-four percent.
Unbuild is, includes both water that you didn't bill for because it went out a hole in a pipe, or, you know, it was lost. It also includes water that you use for maintaining the system, so line flushing and whatever. Now, in your case, I didn't have calculated or estimated water system maintenance use. So if I'd had that, I would have called that a rate category, and then I'd just charge zero dollars to it. But I'd be able to pull that out of the unbilled-for-water group.
But in your analysis, the total cost is divided by the actual billed gallons, not the--
It's divided by the billed gallons, correct.
So we're still basing our costs on how much we're billing, not how much we're producing.
Correct.
So we're not, we're actually charging more because we got a third of the water we lose?
Mm-hmm.
So if we could figure out how to save losing a third of the water, we'd have lower rates.
Right.
And is that third, is that normal? If that's the right word? I mean, is that--
Is that typical?
Normal? That's on the high side.
Okay.
In most places, when you go over about twenty-five percent unbilled-for-water, even using, you know, some of it for system maintenance, it's getting a little on the high side. If you're at thirty, thirty-five percent, then yeah, it's something that needs to be dealt with. Now, I'm pretty sure that a lot of the capital improvements that you all, on the water side, that you're planning on, have at least something to do with water loss. You probably know you have some leaking lines, and you're probably planning on replacing those.
Your honor, that is correct.
Thank you.
And it's Table Five. It's a long list of capital improvements. It's mostly line replacements, as I recall. And one of the things that I like to try to remember to stress to folks is, capital improvements and debt service and everything related to capital improvements, they're figured into the rates. Equipment, repair, and replacement, those costs are figured in. Operating costs, administration, billing, all those things that were in Table Three, which I didn't show you, but the future of that is in Table Eight. Those are all in the rates. So all of the expenses, plus a ten years out, reserve target, they're all built into the rates. Now, what that actually means is, none of your rates need to go up very much. So that means that on a rate adequacy basis, you all are actually doing a good job on rate adequacy. Now, the rate structure needs a little work. But when it comes to having adequate rates, you've been doing a good job, other than the fact that you've got a lot of big capital improvements coming down the pike. And probably, to some degree, repair and replacement needs. So you have a few needs, which it is common to not build into rates, because lots of times, you're not quite certain about how you need to do that. But over the long haul, the rates need to pay for everything. I've taken all of that that I knew of, and I feel pretty good about what Kyle supplied me with. I feel pretty good that you have a nice, solid capital improvement plan, so all of that is in there. Now, I did not tell you quite how I arrive at, come on, system development fees and surcharges to the minimum charge. Again, it's a cost-to-serve sort of a proposition. This Table Twelve, I extracted from a study, or a manual, that the American Water Works Association put together, the AWWA. They have the M1 manual, which is a great, basically bible for rate setting. They have another manual that goes, or that relates their findings when they test water meters. They test water meters of all kinds, all different sizes, under different pressures, you name it, they test water meters. And among other things, they have figured out the sustainable peak flow capacity of different size and different kinds of water meters. Water meter size, mathematically, is the most direct and easiest way to divvy up capacity costs. Because if you'll think of it like this, when you build a water system, your design engineer designs it to be so big, to have a certain amount of capacity to serve, and that capacity costs money, and that capacity is related to, not so much the number of customers that you have, but the ability of all the meters that they expect are on or will be connected to the system, the ability of all those meters to pass flow at peak. So there are design criteria that they have to use to design a water system. The AWWA has studied meters, and they've found that the maximum rated safe operating flow in gallons per minute of a five-eighths-inch meter is twenty gallons per minute. A three-quarter-inch meter is thirty gallons per minute, meaning that it has about fifty percent more flow capacity than a five-eighths-inch meter. Now, I'm going to undo a little bit of that in just a bit. A one-inch meter, fifty, so it has two and a half times more the flow capacity of a five-eighths. And if we, oop, if we look down on the Table Two, for example, a four-inch singlet meter has five hundred gallons per minute flow capacity at twenty-five times more than a five-eighths-inch meter. That means that a four-inch meter is absorbing twenty-five times more of your capacity to meet demand as a five-eighths. Or said another way, you could hook up twenty-five five-eighths-inch meters for the capacity cost of a one-four-inch meter. It is common for systems to charge the same minimum charge to all customers, you know, big and small. And in a small system, especially if they don't have very many big meters, or bigger than normal meters, and definitely not four, six, and eight-inch meters, if they don't have real big meters, then that might be okay. It might be worth simplifying the rate structure, and then end up giving a little bit away to the big meter customers. But that's not your situation. You've got four thousand, six hundred, or thereabouts, meters, and you have several that are big. One that I remember is an eight. I think you have several sixes, you got a lot of fours. About ten percent of your meters are one-inch or bigger. So they absorb a high percentage of your system's capacity. By all rights, back to the cost-to-serve notion, those kinds of customers should pay a higher minimum charge. Now, a four-inch meter should not pay twenty-five times more than the minimum of a five-eighths, because included in the minimum, the basic minimum, are the billing costs, general administration, all that regular kind of stuff that everybody incurs, or causes you to incur equally. They should only pay twenty-five times the capacity cost. And for the most part, that's a small percentage of your general fixed cost. So keep that one in mind. But then I'll also tell you, there is one simplification that I recommend for you. And this is probably a good time to go to Table A, which is probably on about page thirty-something. So on page twenty-seven. And I'm going to go ahead and scale that up a little bit. If you look at that middle column in that table, monthly minimum charge, for a five-eighths or three-quarter-inch meter, it's twenty dollars and sixty-nine cents. It's the same. And then remember, a three-quarter-inch meter has fifty percent more peak flow capacity than a five-eighths-inch meter. But the dollar difference between those two, for that peak flow capacity cost, is not even a couple of bucks, as I recall. Most, in fact, probably three-quarters of your customers are served by a five-eighths or three-quarter-inch meters. Almost all of those are residential. So if you combine those two, and this is what I've done, and this is what I recommend you do, I combined those two, came up with the average minimum charge of the five-eighths and three-quarters. That came out to twenty-sixty-nine. It makes it a whole lot simpler for you to set rates, and especially for you to tell a customer who calls, hey, how come my bill is this much? And they're residential. As long as they don't have a one- or two-inch meter, and very few of those will, then you tell them, and you're looking at their bill, it's twenty dollars and sixty-nine cents. That pays the basic fixed cost, it also pays your share of capacity cost. And then you go across and you tell them, the unit charge per thousand gallons, for the first six thousand gallons, is two dollars and sixty-one cents. And then everything above that is three dollars. And it's three dollars rather than two sixty-one, because that's called a conservation rate. It's set that way to try to encourage folks to kind of watch the water use, you know, don't use it all up. So two sixty-one, three bucks--
Carl?
That's the structure that I'm recommending.
Why?
Yeah.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, why three dollars? Why conservation? Why not encourage them to use it? It's an enterprise fund. The more you use, the more money you make, the more costs are covered. You're not wearing out the pipe, and you certainly aren't wearing out the meter. So why not use more?
We're back to the capacity-to-serve issue. At some point--
Five eighths?
What?
Five eighths?
No, I'm talking about the water system as a whole. Think about your water source, basically, or your water treatment plant. It's designed to only pump so much water through in a day, or a peak period. Once you reach that peak, then you have to build more capacity. The state's not going to let you, you know, sprint by on inadequate capacity to serve. So you're going to have to build another increment of capacity, and at that point, your expenses go up rather than down. Now, as long as you can keep using the existing capacity that you've got built, then you're right. The more volume you sell, the less it costs per unit. But eventually, that use catches up to you.
Well, this city planned several years ago, in nineteen eighty-five, on the sewer system, it was supposed to be capacity of three, thirty thousand, or twenty thousand. That's never been reached. We're only using half of it.
Okay.
Water system is probably similar. We had a growth rate in eighty-five, where we had all kinds of industrial capacity outside called the uranium mines. The city was building, and there was a lot of capacity for the houses that were here. So my question is, why do we want to hold back when we don't have a limited supply? We have a, we haven't exceeded our capacity on the river, nor have we exceeded our capacity on any of the pumps. So I understand three dollars is a lot better than two sixty. I understand that concept real clearly. But I hate the word conserve. If I had a gas station, I would want to pump as much gas as I could. I wouldn't tell them, oh, no, you're only allowed five gallons. If I had a car wash, I would want every bay being utilized.
Conservation rates, the mathematical notion of conservation rates is, if you have a limiting factor in being able to supply at some level, then the cost--
Do we know what our limiting factor is, Kyle?
Oh, you're probably good ways from it right now, I would guess.
Your honor, to answer that specific question, I couldn't, but I can tell you that our water treatment plant has a rate of seven CFS of the Wind River. Last year, the irrigation district did actually request that we produce less water because there was demand on the river. We produce about four million gallons a day, and that is our capacity in the peak time in the summer. So we don't have a lot of added capacity in our water treatment plant during those high summer months.
Now, the other piece that I'll tell you, and this is the piece that you all get to decide, this is not up to me. And that is, rate structuring can, and in this case, I've started with cost-to-serve rates. I've added this conservation rate, because you actually have a conservation rate right now. So I wanted to mirror that rate that you have now, because that sent me a signal that you wanted to encourage less high-volume use. But it's a policy issue on your side of whether you charge conservation rates, or a level unit charge for all volume served, or even declining rates. You could charge less for high volumes of use, if you wanted to. That's a policy decision on your part. But I started with basically the cost-to-serve notion, and then saw that you have a-- But I started with basically the cost-to-serve notion, and then saw that you have a conservation rate structure. So I pretty well assumed that you wanted, you had it for reasons, so you wanted a conservation rate structure, so I mirrored that. But yeah, it's all up to you guys. Okay, so back to that table. And this Table A is the set of rates that I calculated and recommend that you adopt. It has a few other pieces in there. I'll catch those real quick. Monthly snowbird fee. You've got some people who leave here when the snow comes around. In fact, I changed my plans a little bit, and I'm going to try to leave out early in the morning, try to get ahead of some snow if I can. That snowbird fee, you can see, is not as much as the minimum charge for even a small meter. $20.69 versus 9.97, or call it about 10 bucks. It is not that full $20.69 because snowbirds, when they are gone, do not cause the system to incur all of the fixed costs that a regular staying there customer causes. I did a marginal cost calculation to figure out of the fixed costs, what part of those are related to snowbirds when they're gone. It worked out to about 50%. And by the way, I see that pretty commonly. About a third to 50% or so is pretty normal for snowbird fees. If you don't have very many snowbirds, don't worry about a snowbird fee. You can let them leave, and if they want the water shut off, then you shut their water off. And when they're ready to come back and they call you and say, hey, we're going to be back Monday, turn the water on, you go out and turn the water on. Now, I understand that you don't charge a shut-off fee, but you do charge a turn-on fee. What I would recommend you do is you charge for every service you provide. One of them is shut off, the other is turned back on, whatever it costs, plus some margin to cover the situation where you're not always going to recover all of your expenses. Charge one fee for turning off the water when they go, another fee for when they come back. Most of the time, I find, the cost to shut off water and turn it back on is greater than going to that snowbird fee, the $10 instead of 20 per month. It usually costs more to have their water shut off and turned back on than to just leave it on and pay the 20 bucks for the month or two they're gone. Now, if somebody's gone for a long time, it might make sense to turn off, turn on. But, you know, they can choose which way they want to go. The other piece that I have there, the last column, is the monthly extra unit charge. I want to talk about that one a little bit. I've calculated, and I recommend, that you adopt minimum charges that include a surcharge to recover capacity costs. So you see in the monthly minimum charge column, it starts at 20.69 at one-inch meter, it goes to 27.10, and then 37.79. And the last one, you can see clearly down there, is a four-inch compound class-one meter. Probably don't need to worry about the classes of meters, but $123 as compared to a $20 minimum charge. That's the minimum charge, the minimum charge to recover all the costs that are incurred by different meter sizes. The monthly extra unit charge is an alternative to charging a meter-size-based minimum. The way that one works is apartment complex, mobile home park, strip mall where there's five units in the strip mall, but only the owner of the strip mall gets the bill, a situation where you have multi-downstream-of-the-meter subunits or subcustomers or use points. You've got those downstream of the meter. You should not charge each one of those subunits a full minimum charge, because that means you're double or five times charging them for the billing cost, which you don't incur at double or five times. You only incur one increment of those costs. All of those extra, they're not really your customers. They're the customers of whoever owns the property. All of those downstream subunits are customers of the property owner. You should not be charging a full minimum to that property owner. You should only charge the marginal fixed cost to serve them. You see, that's the same for the 5/8 and 3/4 inch meters. Snowbirds and subunits cause you to incur costs about the same. There's a slight difference between the two, but it probably doesn't make a quarter's difference in the bill. So 9.97 for the first two meter sizes, but then you see for that last column, for that extra unit charge, it stays the same. It's not related to the meter size, the master meter size, because it's an alternative to how you recover basic or unavoidable fixed costs and capacity costs. So you charge increments of the 9.97. If you have a property that has 10 subunits, you would charge a full minimum for one of them, because it pays the billing cost, and then the other nine, you would charge at 9.97. That would be the minimum, and then you charge the unit charges for whatever they use. So don't do both. Don't charge the meter-size minimum and the 9.97 for each subunit. If you're going to charge subunits, you charge the first minimum, the 20.69, and then however many increments of the subunit charge. Back to what I recommend, though. I really recommend that you go with a meter-size-based minimum charge. Now granted, once a property has enough subunits, and it looks like it'll hit that situation for a small meter at about 10 subunits, and even for a one-inch meter, $27 compared to $20, add one more subunit, and at that point, 11 or so subunits, you'll end up charging less on the minimum charge to that kind of a property. But mathematically, it's fair and defensible. The subunit or the extra unit charge, that one is harder to defend. It's mathematical, but it's based on grosser assumptions than the meter-size basis minimum charge. I have that same sort of a table for sewer. The numbers are different, but I calculated rates for sewer in exactly the same way with one difference. So each one has a minimum charge, has a unit charge. Now, I only calculated a level unit charge, not a conservation or a declining rate unit charge for sewer. Most sewer service is charged on a level unit charge basis. Very rarely is it different than charging basically at the average cost. So one unit charge, a snowbird fee, and a monthly extra unit charge. Again, numbers are different, but it's the same methodology. So to look down just a little bit, you have an eight-inch meter. I don't know what type, probably doesn't matter a great deal. If it is a compound class-one meter, the minimum charge should be $358.41, and then the rest is the same after that. Because of the cost of capacity, that eight-inch meter, remember, a four-inch meter had 25 increments of capacity that it absorbs compared to a 5/8 inch meter. The eight-inch meter doesn't have 50, it has much more than that, because as the orifice size gets bigger, the square inch, the flow capacity to go through that opening goes up exponentially, not in a linear fashion. So they absorb, that kind of a meter absorbs a whole lot more of your capacity. So that's minimum and unit charges for water. Now, why don't we skip to sewer, and I'm just going to tell you about the one variation in the sewer rates that I recommend. The rest is the same. It's the same methodology, same basic notions. So go to Table C, which is page 34. Your costs in water and sewer are actually pretty similar, so the rates end up being pretty similar, too. Instead of $20.69 minimum charge that is in the water, in sewer, it works out to $17.73. Unit charge, 3.50 instead of 2.61 and 3. So the variable costs are a little higher on the wastewater side. Snowbird and extra unit charges, the capacity costs are just pretty close to the same, 20 cents different in the small meter size. So these rates look a lot like the water rates that I came up with. With that, questions on, I don't know, maybe calculations, maybe assumptions, or who knows what, but what kind of questions do you all think you have so far?
Counselman Bailey?
The system development fee, and sorry if I missed it, is that, so is that the TAP fee, basically?
Actually, it's the cost of capacity. The TAP fee is normally considered to be the cost of getting somebody hooked up. So if you supply a meter, if you supply pipe or anything else, you go out and do an inspection to make sure the connections are done right and stuff like that, the cost of doing all those sorts of things on the city's side should be what you recover in your TAP fee.
Right, so the system development fee is not the TAP fee?
No, that's in addition to whatever you charge for a TAP fee. If I remember right, you're-
So that when we chart, Mia, I guess if-
Your Honor, I believe we refer to those as the plant investment fees, when they're purchasing, permitting, and through community development, which normally does include the TAP.
Okay.
Currently priced at-
When you get a new water service or sewer service, you're paying this fee plus the TAP fee, which comes up to what most people just think of as the TAP fee?
It's very commonly just called a TAP fee, yeah.
Okay. So that's the upfront cost?
Right.
Okay, okay.
And by the way, I, I'll call it sized. I sized the system development fee so that for a small meter, it would end up being the same as what your current TAP fee is. So you would end up charging, if your TAP costs stayed the same, basically double what your current TAP fee is, to cover system development and TAP costs. But then as meter size goes up, the capacity fee would be higher, and after a while, it's System development fee, I purposely sized those fees so that I wouldn't be raising or lowering your basic TAP fee. I would aim at what you're charging right now, and then only allow the natural progression of capacity use of the bigger meters cause those TAP fees to be higher. I almost always recommend that when it comes to assessing system development fees, that you end up with a rate table, and it says, if the water meter size you put in is going to be two inches, this is what your system development fee will be, this is what the TAP fee will be, and this is what the total will be. Do it that way, and actually have that table go as high as you want to go in meter size. You do have an eight-inch meter right now, so I suspect you could get another one or two somewhere in the future. So you probably want to go at least that high, maybe a little higher. When it comes to setting system development fees for what I'll call very large meters, you have other things to take into consideration, too. I've mathematically figured out what it would take for the utility to recover its capacity costs, but it might be, and my gosh, is our community development guy not here? I'd be promoting something he tries to do, I bet. When it comes to large meters, that usually means that they're going to have employees. And cities like to have new employees, or they like to have new opportunities for existing employees, because that usually means somebody's getting a pay raise or a new job. And that helps the local economy, and we're talking all that community development stuff now. I'm not a community developer. I'm a utility rate analyst, so I'm always looking out for the utility first. But I know that you all have other things you need to deal with. So what I almost always recommend is, don't go cutting deals on system development fees for small meters. Those costs are pretty well sunk in getting that new small meter customer. And those small meter customers usually don't have a real big impact on jobs and the economy and stuff like that. But at some point, at some size, you might want to consider letting somebody hook up for something less if it looks like they're going to do great other good things for the community. Again, that's a policy thing. You all get to decide that sort of thing. But mathematically, that's where the system development fees fall out. The last one you see, six-inch, is roughly $9,500. Now, that's not full freight on the cost of capacity. Full freight would be more like, for a meter that size, probably $50,000 or $60,000. The difference you recover in the surcharge to the minimum based on meter size. So again, that's, if you're going to go meter size for system development fees, it's best to go meter size for the minimum charges, too. Don't mix in the multiples of the multi-unit charges, that 9.97 or 9.75. When you go mixing and matching, you can kind of get balled up a little bit. The other thing that I'll say about system development fees is basing them on meter side, and this also has to do with the surcharges. Basing them on meter size is very mathematical. It's very much based in the capacity of meters to pass flow sustainably. So scientifically, we can point to the proof that that $9,500 fee for a six-inch meter, it makes more sense than $9.75 or $9.95, 97 cents, times however many subunits are down below the meter. It's much easier to defend that kind of a structure than the multi-unit charge structure. And I say defend on purpose because I also get hired by somebody who is suing or getting sued over utility rates, and it is almost always based on multi-unit charges, almost every time. So I shy away from encouraging anybody to adopt multi-unit charges for downstream subunits of use. I'd much rather see them use a meter-size-based minimum charge. Okay, that is sewer. Now, let's go down a little bit more, and we need to at least say a little something I calculated sanitation rates with the same principles as for water and sewer, but because sanitation is a lot more difficult to figure out the units of use, and, you know, there pretty much isn't such a thing as peak capacity. You don't have meters. You have bin sizes. You have numbers of pickups per week. You have those kinds of units, but you don't have a peak capacity of solid waste, other than the capacity of the landfill to be able to accept waste, and then eventually it has to be closed, and then you have to go somewhere else, or you build a new landfill. You've got to do something different at some point. But that is kind of pie in the- But that is kind of pie in the sky in numbers on the sanitation side. So it's more difficult to arrive at a cost-to-serve rate for sanitation. I also found that the rate structure that I came up with is pretty different from your current rate structure for the vast majority of your customers. A residential ninety-gallon bin pickup once per week, that kind of a customer, their bill would go up, as I recall, eight percent. Not a real big difference. Lots of other bills would go down, or they would go up much more than that percentage. But in reality, there are either no customers in those classes. I still modeled what the rate should be in those classes in case you get a customer like that someday. But there are either no customers, or there are very few. You know, there's like one or two or five customers in some of your rate classes. So even though the bill for a customer in one of those classes might go up or down by fifty or seventy percent, in reality, it's one or two customers. It has almost no effect on your revenue stream. The big deal customers are the ninety-gallon regular service customers, the vast majority of your customers. The other thing that I'll say about the real big structure change is, and I wrote a whole subsection about this, you might find that if you adopt this slate of sanitation rates in a few months, you might have some customers whose bills would go up a whole lot because they've got a three-yard dumpster, or they've got a big roll-off, they've got something big. They might find, or they might do a little math looking at your rates table, that hey, if we stop using the rollout, if, or roll-off, if we used a three-yard dumpster and we had them pick it up three times a week, we could save some money doing that. Now, I don't fault anybody for, you know, trying to save money on sanitation or anything else. And if making that change will physically work for them, and then they can save some money, more power to them, but you all just need to be aware, in the large capacity, lots of pickup-per-week-type customers, they might try to, you know, switch their service around so they could work their bill back down, which would work some of your revenue down. Now, it's not going to have a huge effect because you make most of your revenue from those ninety-gallon regular service customers. But it will have some effect. So I think of your sanitation rates, the ones that I recommend here, as a bit of a work-in-progress. You're going to need to adopt them, and then you track it for two, three, six months. See how the revenues are coming in. See if you still have the same mix of customers, or if they've gravitated to the smaller bins, more pickups, that sort of thing. And if they do that enough to run your revenue down by probably two, three percent compared to what I projected, then over the long haul, that'll be an important difference. Ten years' time, that's twenty or thirty percent shortfall. So if they come in a lot short like that, then it might be that you need to tweak rates a little bit again. So you might not make a whole year before you need to make another adjustment in sanitation rates. But I do recommend that you go to a structure more like this, because this structure has the minimum charge per month, that's the basic cost to just be available to supply sanitation to folks. At one pickup per week, for a residential, or for a ninety-gallon rollout regular service, that second line, it's two dollars and forty-five cents. So you add that to the minimum, and one pickup disposal charge, so taking it to the landfill, it works out to a buck seventy for that volume of waste. And it's a buck seventy for the next group, which is verified recycling. It's different for others because their bin size is different, their pickup, the volume that you're picking up from them is different. But you pay the same amount at the landfill. It just costs X dollars per ton to leave it at the landfill. So that's what the one disposal pickup charge is. And then the rightmost column, and those three columns in the middle are the kind of shaded, I shaded those so you won't concentrate on those. The actual monthly bill that you should adopt for each one of those classes is the rightmost column for a residential alley dumpster regular, thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents. As I recall, it's pretty close to that now. For a ninety-gallon rollout, it's thirty-one forty-eight. There's a slight difference between those two. You have that difference right now. I mirrored that same difference. Same for recycling. Now, that is a difference that I've come up with as compared to your current rates. Your current rates gives them a break for recycling. I don't know if you're saving money when they recycle. You all have to run some numbers to figure out if you're saving money through recycling. But I calculated the same waste disposal cost for each of those. If it turns out that you actually can save some money with recycling, then you can calculate what that rebate needs to be, and you rebate it back to those folks. I also calculated the same fee for both of them because I couldn't find in your data anywhere where it definitively said we have one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five regular rollout customers, and then we have two thousand and however, whatever the balance is, in verified recycling. You don't keep that kind of a record. So I didn't have numbers to crunch, so I just made the assumption they're all one great big group, so thirty-one forty-eight for those folks. And then different amounts for other customers or extra pickups and things.
Are there clients that you have that make money on recycling?
Well, first of all, I don't do a whole lot of sanitation rate studies, and most of my doer here in Wyoming.
Was that a yes or no?
No, I'm getting there. So I don't have a whole lot. So I don't have a lot of data, whoops, to base it on. In the past, so probably two years ago and farther back than that, recycling, if you were limiting what you recycled to those things that had good markets, you could make money on those. Here lately, and I understand it has to do with China, they don't want dirty recyclables anymore and stuff like that. So here lately, the market for recyclables, at least a lot of them that can get dirty, has gotten pretty bad. So these days, I'm thinking not. Now, that may turn around, and we also might recycle cleaner and stuff like that. But at least right now, it's looking like, no, it's really hard to make money recycling. At least...
Really a service then to do that versus cast iron cells at such and such.
Right.
Therefore, you recycle cast iron, you recycle aluminum, because you're making a return.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And the, sometimes, we, we collectively, and all of us in some place, will decide that we want to recycle because then we don't have to cut down as many trees, or do as much mining, or stuff like that. We can reuse stuff that we already have. We just run it back through the mill and make new paper and make new stuff. Sometimes, even if we don't make money recycling, we may decide we want to not put it in a landfill and instead get it back into use. And that's a valid way of thinking. Now, at some point, at some dollar cost, we're probably going to fall off of that bandwagon and decide, you know what, we just save a ton of money if we just put it in the ground, and then we just make new stuff. Again, that's a policy decision for you all. You know, do you want to support the notion of recycling even if it doesn't make money? If it does make money or at least break even, well, that's a pretty good proposition. If it makes money, then it makes pretty darn good sense to recycle. Hopefully, we get there again. Okay, so that table E is the set of rates that I recommend for sanitation, trash collection, that sort of thing. I left off that wild card of recycling because you all are just going to have to gauge your markets and see what you can really recycle economically and that sort of thing. Otherwise, the methodology is the same for sanitation. You can see I've got a minimum, I've got pickup charges for collection because it costs money to drive trucks around, and a pickup and disposal jar, or a disposal charge per pickup to pay the tipping fee at the landfill. All right, any other questions on sanitation? Now, given you a tutorial on cost classification, the rates that I came out with in all three utilities are calculated to recover all of your actual costs, to recover new costs in the future, going out ten years in regular costs, twenty years in repair and replacement costs, to recover capital costs, to recover debt, all those sorts of things, to account for inflation because of the assumption that if you adopt a set of rates initially, in the future, as inflation happens, you just raise all rates and fees across the board by then inflationary factor. Whatever the budget's going to go up by, you raise your rates and fees by that percentage amount. If your budget next year is projected not to go up, you could entertain the idea of not raising rates next year after this initial adjustment, anyway. But I almost always recommend that if your budget says, well, our costs are not going to go up next year, or going from the fourth year to the fifth year, our costs are not projected to go up, I'm guessing that you've gotten used to trying to make do with the amount of money that you had, so you find ways to trim costs. Some of those that you trimmed were probably things that you really need to plan on taking care of. So it's not that you eliminated the cost, you just postponed the cost. I suspect, Kyle, you have a lot of capital improvements that are really postponed costs. They're not brand-new costs. You knew a lot of these things were going to be needed for a long time, you just haven't bit them off yet because the rates wouldn't pay for those things. The rates will now pay for those things as long as they come in as projected. So do the initial adjustment, do it pretty soon. My projection actually assumed that you would have done that September one, so we're a little bit behind now. But you have strong reserves, so it's not like you're going down the tubes if you're two or three months late. But pretty soon, do the initial adjustments, however it is that you do those. And then track the results of those rates. And then also watch your expenses. See if the expenses come in about as I projected. See if the revenues come in as I projected. If they do, and if the next year's budget's going up three percent, then it's an across-the-board three percent increase, it's a real easy thing to describe to folks. We set our rates initially so they'd be adequate. Now the budget's going up three percent, so we need to raise rates by three percent. I've structured the initial rates so that you can do that for a good five years, maybe even seven or eight. But you can do that real easy do-it-yourself kind of a rate increase for a long time. And once you get five, seven, eight years down the pike, I suspect that it's probably going to be capital improvements. I suspect that capital improvements that you've planned for right now, you're going to find out, whoops, you know, there's one that popped up because the permitting agency said thou shalt do this, that, and the other, and it's going to cost you ten million dollars. You're going to find out that some wild card, probably capital improvement expense, sneaks up on you, and then it's time to analyze rates again because your cost structure is going to be real different when that happens. But until then, you should be good to go with just inflationary increases. Okay. Questions? I've probably worn out your brain a little bit.
I'm zapped. That's why, look, I look at that, the way you're talking, I view my electricity bill, and there's a demand feature, and then there's this feature, and then there's that feature. And I see all of that built in here on water.
Yeah.
And the size of the meter and capacity in. And, but yet, I see that they're able to maintain their equipment because they have cash flow. So I'm not poo-pooing it. I see that it's valuable and is valid.
Electric utilities generally are the better, maybe even the best funded utility that we have.
Well, our water, you can take a second.
Spoken like a rate analyst, right?
I think he stood before boards before or something. So, question, Your Honor? Okay, so with our current rates that we have and the proposed rates that you have put in place, what, at the end of the year, okay, our current rates would generate one million dollars, what would the new rates generate? Is there a percentage that you're basically building into this rate structure? I mean, just in a pure dollars and cents, here's how much more money this rate's going to generate for us this coming year if we... And I'm not expecting you to pull an exact number off the top of your head, but...
Actually, there are exact numbers in the spreadsheet, and we could go to that, too. But I'll take you first to chart. This is in the water model. This is the last chart, actually, it's the last page in the water model. This is the sum of all reserves in the test year, 2018. I can't remember exactly what it was, but I think it's about three-point-four million. Now, I'm not positive if you had a real clear split between water, sewer, and sanitation reserves. You did, okay. So we had three, we'll call it three-point million, three-point-four million in total water system reserves. It's going down in 2019, and I can't remember exactly why. 2019, you adopt the new rates that I've recommended, so you can see it's headed up. It's going to go up for a couple of years. Now, you see the red line and the blue line start to separate after this year, basically? That is under the assumption that, and I'll tell you what, Tony, in this table or this chart, I don't think I included your assumption that you wouldn't leave the rates at the same level for a whole ten years. You're going to do some sort of rate increases over time. And, yeah, it's three percent. And in a few other charts up above, I've got that included. I don't think it's in this one. So the red line depicts what will happen to your reserves if you don't raise your rates, make any adjustment for ten years. So by 2023, you're at break even, you're at zero reserves, and then you're in the red by about four million in ten years. But if you adopt the rates that I calculated, you're going to max out again at about three-point-two million or so in 2021. It'll drop back down because of a big group of capital improvements that you need to do. And from there on, you're keeping up with growing debt service because of the three percent annual inflationary increases. So you're going to have a little bit of a roller coaster to start, but at least you're not going to go up, go down, go up, and then drop down way below zero because of future increases. That's reserves. Now, to look at it in another way, some of these charts that I put together, like working capital versus goal... capital versus goal, make much more sense for utilities that start off with no reserves. You all are starting off with big reserves. So these charts really don't give you useful information. It's the total reserves that do most for you. I'll come back to affordability index. Come on. Okay, residential customers' bill. The red line is what the bill is right now for a residential water customer using 5,000 gallons. Now, your actual average use for a 5/8-inch or a small meter residential customer is 6,000, I think it's 6,400 or somewhere along in there. I have that in a table, too. But that's what they really use, but if we base this on 5,000 gallons of use, which is kind of a national standard, their bill is $32 and some change, can't remember exactly. That's the red line. And then if we assume, starting in 2020, that you do 3% across-the-board increases to your current rates, you can see that bill starts to go up on a straight line. The blue line are the rates that I'm recommending, the ones that are in this report. They jump up a little bit initially in 2019, and then they pretty much mirror what's gonna happen if you just assume, keep the same rates, except raise everything 3%. Because I'm assuming that you'll raise future rates by 3% too. But those are gonna generate more revenue because they're a bit higher. They're about $10 higher for that kind of a customer. The green line is a customer that uses only 2,000 gallons per month, and their income level is one-half of the median income for Riverton. I chose those numbers on purpose because that pretty closely depicts the little old lady, widow retired, living alone on social security. That kind of a customer makes a half or a third of what the average income is, but they also use a lot less water and sewer than what the average customer uses, or a 5,000-gallon customer. They use about 2,000 gallons, maybe a little less. So this is what their bill would be. It's lower right now, but it's going up by 3% in the future, too. A affordability index depicts the same things but in a different way. This is the bill for a 5,000 or a 2,000-gallon customer. The bite that that bill takes out of their income. So on a monthly basis, it's their monthly bill divided by their monthly income. The blue line again, that's the 5,000-gallon customer, and that's the kind of customer that makes the average income in the community. They're spending about 70 and a few percentage points of their income to pay their water bill. And then in the future, it's actually gonna go down because incomes are projected by the Census Bureau to go up faster than 3% in Riverton. So their bill as a percent of their income is gonna get cheaper. Bill's going up, but their income's going up faster. So about 0.7%. The national average is about 1%. So you're at about 3/4 or so of the national average for affordability. The green line is the little old lady widow retired using 2,000 gallons. Because her income is so much less, that's the really important piece here, her affordability index is up at about 1.1%, and it will grow instead of going down because her future income, because social security's not keeping up, her income is not gonna grow as fast as the average residential customer. Affordability is what people feel. The bill amount, and especially how much the bill would increase, that's what they see, but what they feel is affordability. How much of a bite of my income will that higher bill take? Affordability is really what we need to concentrate on most, not the bill amount. I have some clients where they make, their average income is $100,000 a year, and they feel like, you know, when they spend 0.2 or 0.3% of their income for water, you know, it's just too high. Well, on affordability basis, no, it's not too high. Lots of times, on a real basis, it's not very high either because many times those cities are bigger, and they're bigger because they got, you know, some big manufacturers, they got some big income sources for them. But affordability index is the thing that people feel, so that's the one that you need to be a little careful of, especially for the low-volume, low-income customer. They're the ones who could slip into the slow-pay, no-pay situation, and then, they're not here tonight, but the folks who answer the phone with complaints and then have to try to call somebody to collect, you know, the 50 bucks that they owe the city. If you did a little bit of time accounting and a little bit of cost accounting to figure out what it costs to collect the slow-pay, no-pays, you probably would find it's a pretty important chunk of money. And chunk of money in terms of what it is that you're getting for what it is you're doing. Now, Mr. Larson is real keen on the notion of, when you do something, you ought to recover your costs, plus you ought to make a profit. On that kind of a proposition, collecting slow-pay, no-pay, especially the small volume, small-bill customers, you almost can't recover your costs, much less make any profit on that kind of a proposition. So those folks are most commonly in that green line as opposed to the blue line. Now, you'll have some slow-pay, no-pays that are average-income folks, and they, for whatever reason, they just choose to not pay their bill on time, and they might do that for two or three months. There are those. But the one that is the little old lady widow retired, living alone on social security with a real small bill, but it's going up, you know, by a good chunk for her, if she slips into slow-pay, no-pay, and that word, you know, gets around a whole lot that the city's beating up on those people going around trying to collect 50 bucks, that's just a real bad PR thing. So you do wanna pay attention to those low-income, low-volume customers. At 1% or 2%, that's not exorbitant for that kind of a customer. They just simply don't make a lot of money, so their water bill is gonna be a big chunk of it. But when you start getting up in 4% and 5% range, I see some that are like that, that gets really tough for a lot of folks. So now they're starting to think, "Well, I guess I can start cutting my pills into thirds instead of halves." I'm being a little facetious, a little cynical, but...
No dog food?
What's that?
No dog food? You're gonna cut, go back to...
Hopefully, we don't have to go all the way there, but yeah. It's that sort of thing that you don't want to hear get out. So pay attention to those folks. These rates will still keep their bill in a pretty good range. Excuse me, Tony?
For clarity, Councilman Bailey, was your question more with regard to fund, like, the total amount we needed to collect in terms of a fund?
Yeah, yes.
Like, in terms of hundreds or hundreds of thousands of dollars? What is the change?
I went off on a tangent, didn't I?
A 3% increase, or is this a little more than that right now to get us caught up? Where I was going?
It's getting you caught up.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't kept up...
So to catch up, then you're accelerating faster than the costs are. So what Mike's real question was is, if we're making $200,000 currently, your current rates will increase us to 225, or 230, or 250. And that will catch us up faster than just staying on our course the way we are.
Yes. Look, the top, it's small font, but that line 20, the weighted average revenue increase, the rates that I calculated will end up generating on water about 10% more revenue than what you're generating right now. So you get an initial bump of 10%, and then you do 3% after that...
Keep a cost of living raised from there.
Right. So that initial bump...
Bumping it down.
Yep, okay.
That 10%, I'll tell you where most of my clients come in. Most of them come in with an initial rate increase to get them caught up, somewhere between 20 and 45%. They've let the rates get that far behind. And you all have done a great job at only 10% behind because you got a bunch of capital improvements and things that you're coming close to being able to pay for. So rate adequacy-wise, you're pretty much there. 10%, 10% is just an easy slam dunk for me. I don't wince at all at 10%. I don't start to feel a little worried until we get up to about 30% or so. And that's mainly because I know you all on your side are gonna get really, really worried about a 30% increase. So 10.3 is for water, for sewer, and by the way, that's the Table 18, a bill comparisons table. It compares your current bills for different volumes of use with the bill for...
128.
The recommended bill for that same volume use. Now, on the wastewater side, you do need much more, 28%. You've got some big needs on the wastewater side, and I think it's mostly capital improvements, too. But 28%, but in real terms, if you look at 2,000 gallons, that row 28, right now, the bill is $17.70. It should be $28.73. For an increase of 703, that increase, let me scroll down just a little bit. You see that current bill, right in the middle, current bill for this volume, 1770, goes up to 4,000 gallons because you have a 4,000-gallon usage allowance. I'm recommending that you eliminate the usage allowance. So that means folks using on the higher end of the usage allowance, their bills will go up a lot because basically they're not paying for that 4,000 gallons of use right now, they're getting it for free. So I'm wanting them to pay for all of their use. Their bill will go up more rapidly than even 6,000 gallons of use. That bill will go up by less because you've already been charging them 2,000 gallons of use. When, and this is wastewater, your average residential use is 3,492 gallons, I know it's a small font, but 3,492, that's a little bit less than 4,000 gallons, which means that your average customer's only paying the minimum charge, the 1770. They don't have to pay any unit charges. Probably the majority of all of your customers are just paying the 1770, which means the little old lady widow retired, living alone on social security, who uses 2,000 gallons, she's paying 1770, just like a 3,999-gallon customer, she's only getting half as much use as what they are. So the current structure, especially on the wastewater side, is out of whack because of the usage allowance. Now, don't feel bad about having usage allowance, it's a real common practice. I think many, many years ago, that sort of a structure was used to try to account for the fact that whether somebody uses any or not, you're gonna incur capacity costs. Engineers and other smart people, long ago, before we had spreadsheets and things, they were able to figure out what the slide rule, that a low-volume customer incurs a certain amount of cost. A lot of that has to do with capacity. So they came up with the idea, well, we'll give them the first 4,000 gallons, but in reality, we're gonna charge them for 4,000 gallons in the minimum charge, big and small users alike. So the small-use customers, they're the ones who overpay, and slightly more, they underpay. If you don't have an allowance at all, then you don't have that skew in the rate structure. Now, we've got spreadsheets so we can fill this stuff out. But back to that bill comparisons table, at 6, their bill doesn't go up as much. At 7, it goes up even less. You can see, once you get up to 15,000, their bill actually goes down. It's because of that first 4,000 gallons. Now, in reality, at 15,000 gallons, you only have about 40 customers in the residential group, 40 customers that use 15,000 gallons or more. It's really uncommon to use that much in this town. So there are only 40 customers or so that actually would see their bill, residential customers, their bill would go down. Most bills would go up. As volume goes up or either down from 4,000 gallons, it will go up less than what it would at 4,000 because those customers suddenly are gonna pay for all the use plus their minimum charge. That sort of thing sometimes can be a little hard for you all to describe to customers. I'll tell you that we human beings tend to use what is right now as our basis for comparison to what might be in the future. In rate utilities, our basis of comparison should be the cost to provide the service. What does it cost to provide service to a high-volume, low-volume, or whatever customer, big meter, small, and so on? What does it cost? Are the rates high enough to recover that cost? That's the comparison that you all need to go back to time and again, and the one that I use all the time. Not what they're paying now, it's what costs are they causing you to incur? It's not gonna work with everybody, but the bottom line, when it's all said and done, is almost everybody recognizes, once the new bills are in place, and they know what it's gonna be and things like that, you know what? It's really actually not that big a deal. The water bill, the sewer bill, it's such a small percentage of my income, I got a lot of other things that are real big fishes to fry that I need to deal with. The water bill is not it. So almost all folks will realize, okay, the math makes sense, the methodology that you described to them or the policy, that makes sense, the bill's really not that big a deal, I'm going on with my life. I know there's much more that I could describe to you, but, you know, I'm pretty sure that I've worn you out with this much, but you've got the basics. You've got the notion of cost to serve, that's where you ought to aim at. If you vary from that, that can be fine if you have good reasoning for that. If you vary, do it consistently. Don't hit and miss, don't vary for one customer, one class of customers, and then not for others. If you come up with a variation from this sort of a structure, be consistent across the board with it. Again, back to, and I'm thinking in terms of risk. I'm always wanting you to make enough money, but I want you to do it fairly and demonstrably in a fair way, and a lot of that has to do with risk. I don't want people getting after you because they think the bill is unfair. So if at all possible, adopt these rates... So if at all possible, adopt these rates or something pretty close to it. You might veer off someplace for a good reason, big meters or something like that. But don't do it wholesale, and don't do it hit and miss with that. Kyle?
Why would we? This is pretty straightforward. Why would you vary? Because the pill is too hard to swallow?
Sometimes it works that way. Now, in your case, your rate increases, when you take them all together, water, sewer, and sanitation, the overall bill that, for example, a residential customer gets is not going to change a great deal. When that is...
Great deal. You're saying 5% or 10%?
It's probably going to be 15 bucks for that kind of a customer. So for that kind of a customer, magnitude-wise, it's not a big change. When that is the case, it's almost always better to just bite off the whole boat at one time, just make the adjustment once, and then see how it goes. And then later on, you do your 3% increases, and that basically will go just fine. I have some clients where they need to raise rates 50%, and especially if they're a low-income community, and especially if the capital improvement that's driving it can be put off for a little while. They pretty commonly will want to split that initial increase in half, you know, do half of it this year, half of it next year, and then we do that 3% thing later on. They pretty commonly will want to do that. But I tell folks, and this is true, and me and I wouldn't be surprised if you find this too, when you make a utility rate adjustment, you will get a certain number of complaints. If you cut the adjustment in half and you do it two years, you'll get about double the number of complaints. Because some people just complain because their bill's going up. It could go up a penny, and they're going to complain. So if you want to make it easier for me as staff to answer the complaint calls, you do one set of adjustments, they get a flurry of calls, and then after two months, that's all done, and then you're operating. And then you get a few at the 3% across-the-board increase, but I bet you wouldn't get more than half a dozen, or maybe a dozen, and those folks are going to complain anyway. So you'll get a few, but it's not a big deal. And the reality is, you've got to keep your revenues on pace with your expenses. They know that personally themselves, too. Inflation happens. They know inflation happens to them. If you keep the message out there, which is the reality, that inflation happens to utilities, too, that means utility bills need to go up, too. But get started with the initial adjustments, and then the across-the-boards later on will be pretty easy.
I'm not asking any more questions.
Okay, the last thing that I'll tell you, probably, is I've really enjoyed helping you with these analyses, figuring out where I would recommend that your rates go. I hope that you go there, and it may be that after you go there, or even before you go there, one or several of you may have some questions. You may read this report some more and get confused about something. Or you may think, well, maybe we ought to look at a different structure, or who knows what. But when those things occur to me, now, don't call me or email me direct, because I've already run into the problem before where one board member, one council member would like to have rates a certain way, and another would like another way, and so they send conflicting things to me, and so I've kind of become the weapon for them to war against each other. So I learned that real early on. That's not to say that's your case, but as a policy, my contact is Mia and Tony. So if you have a question, suggestion, you're wondering, you know, why is this like that? Just filter it through them, and if two or three of you have a similar question, then that'll tell Tony or Mia, that's an important question, plus they'll be able to kind of combine it all together, so I can answer the whole thing all at once. And then I'll filter that back through whoever of them sends it to me. That way, they know exactly what's being asked and answered, rather than somebody individually ask me something, and I send them an answer, and they're the only one who got the answer, and these people are left in the dark. These folks need to run the ship, so I always want to keep them in the middle of contacts. So those are the two reasons why I like to have a contact or two and just run everything through them. But I wouldn't be surprised if you have a question or two after you've kind of mulled things over, and after the brain kind of recuperates from tonight. But I've really enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed my stay out here. Truthfully, I'm hoping it doesn't get extended, but we'll see how that works out.
Thanks, Carl. We appreciate it. Are there any other questions? Staff, do you have anything you want to point out? Mia?
I would just like to add to, double-check the back of your packets. There are some attachments, including the history of our utility rate increases by percentages over the years, starting in 2003. There's also some brief changes, or a brief, I guess, an index on some of the changes that will be made, or would possibly be made. And then there's also some samples of what a customer utility bill would look like before and after, should you decide to implement the changes. So it's just more in a condensed format than what you see in the analysis report.
100-plus pages.
I'm at 149.
There you go.
And it quits moving at 159. Well, yeah, that's a lot of information. We appreciate it.
It is a lot of information, I know. But I'd rather drown you with too much information and facts than leave some things out.
Does counsel have anything?
Thank you.
You all are welcome.
Thanks, Carl.
Glad I got to work with you.
Appreciate it. Staff is okay?
Yes, Your Honor.
Without any other objections, we stand adjourned at 8:40 or 8:55.